Started and hopefully Mr. Frazier can join us as he's able. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thanks. President. Brightwell?
Yeah.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Frazier? Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Madam President, you do have a quorum with excuse Councilman Frazier, and we do have the mayor on the line and city administration and a host of other department heads. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have our presentations. We'll start with the first one from Mayor and Council for the Joint Resolution for Jewish American History Month. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Council and listening audience. Tonight, I'm presenting a joint Mayor-City Council Resolution in celebration of May 2021 as Jewish American History Month. Whereas on April 20th, 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed May as Jewish American History Month. May was chosen due to the highly successful celebration of the 300th anniversary, 350th anniversary of American Jewish history in May 2004, which was organized by the Commission for commemorating 350 years of American Jewish history. And whereas, when the first Jewish settlers came to this land, they, like many others, sought a place of promise where they could practice their faith in freedom and live in liberty. During Jewish American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich history of the Jewish people in America and honor their contributions that they've made to the United States. Whereas, since arriving in 1654, Jewish Americans have achieved great success, strengthened our country, helped shape our way of life, enriching our culture and contributing to a more compassionate and hopeful America. And whereas, Jewish American Heritage Month is also an opportunity to remember and thank the many Jewish Americans who defend our ideals as members of the United States Armed Forces. These courageous men and women risk their lives to protect their fellow citizens and to advance the cause of freedom. And whereas, Southfield is the home to many Jewish residents who contribute to our diverse population. Some of the largest synagogues, Jewish state schools, rabbinical colleges are located in Southfield along with the Jewish vocational services and a multitude of Jewish-owned businesses. And whereas, there are many Jewish elected officials, both past and present, who have served Southfield on a local, county, state, and federal level. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor and Council, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Jewish American Heritage Month in Southfield and call upon all Southfielders to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities that honor the significant contributions of Jewish Americans to our nation. Now, be it further resolved that this resolution in celebration of May 2021 as Jewish American Heritage Month be adopted by the Southfield City Council on May 10th, 2021. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council, may I have them?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to move that we approve the joint resolution in celebration of May 2021 as Jewish American History Month.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, to accept the presentation, I'm sorry, to accept the resolution presented to us for the Jewish American History Month. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next presentation is a Beechwoods Master Plan.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Councilwoman Taylor. The Parks and Recreation Department would like to invite all the Southfield residents, businesses, community stakeholders, and our partners to our virtual open house for the Beechwoods Park Master Plan. We've had over a month of gathering input and ideas from all of our residents for the future Beechwoods, and two concepts have been developed for our residents to review. So we'd like to invite our residents to join us Tuesday, May 11th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And we are so excited to share the information and hear what our folks have to say. So I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to put the invite out there, and we really look forward to hearing from our residents again. You can join from your computer, from your phone, or from Facebook. If you need more information, you can get that on our Parks and Recreation website or our City of Southfield website. It's got some phone numbers and some links so that it's easy to participate and to hear the information. And it will be up on our Facebook page live tomorrow evening. Again, that's May 11th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our appointments. We have two reappointments and one appointment. Mayor, would you like to do the reappointments first and then the appointment in case Ms. Woods is on the phone and would like to speak?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm asking the Council to reappoint to the Planning Commission Anthony, or as we refer to him, Tony Martin, who served with distinction on the Planning Commission. And I also would ask for the reappointment to the Southfield Library Board, Laura Mancini, who has also held that position with distinction.
Thank you. Council?
Madam President, approval of the reappointments of Tony Martin and Laura Mancini. Well, I'm sorry, let's do Tony first to the Planning Commission and Laura Mancini to the Southfield Library Board.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support from Councilman Mandelbaum.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the reappointment to the Planning Commission of Mr. Anthony Martin and the reappointment to the Southfield School Board of Ms. Laura Mancini. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Council. And that's the Southfield Library Board. I'm also asking, we have a vacancy, and this is one of the seats that the mayor appoints on the Southfield Public Arts Commission. And I'm asking you to approve the appointment of Dr. Linda Wood, longtime Southfield resident, also former superintendent of the Southfield Public Schools. I think Dr. Wood is on the line. But I ask for your motion to appoint Dr. Wood.
Thank you, Council.
President, this is Councilman Cruz.
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve the appointment of Dr. Linda Wood to the Public Arts Commission.
Thank you. Is there support?
I support. This is.
Okay, I heard Councilwoman Banks. All right, it's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the appointment to the Public Arts Commission of Ms. Linda Wood, Dr. Linda Wood. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Madam President, for just point of order, can we just ask everyone if they're not talking to mute their lines? We're getting a lot of feedback early in this meeting, so. Thank you. Yep, thank you. That's what I was just getting ready to do because it was very interruptive. Thank you. Is Ms. Woods on the line?
I am. Thank you so very much. Mayor Cyder and council members, I'd just like to thank you so much. It will be my pleasure to serve the Southfield community on the Public Arts Commission. I enjoy doing many things, and one of them is promoting the arts. And I look forward to serving for the upcoming term that I've been appointed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for serving. Okay.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Council, we do not have any minutes. Next, we have our consent agenda. And I would like to pull Item B, the extension of the site plan approval for Oak Flint Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center. I'd like that item pulled. With that being said, is there any other items anyone would like to have pulled? Okay, hearing none. Council?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A, C, D, and E.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support, Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the acceptance of consent agenda items A, C, D, and E. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frazier? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, for Item B, I asked for that to be pulled because I received a phone call from Councilman Frazier with concerns over the wording of some of the difference from our planning paperwork and the paperwork of the applicant. What we're saying is Provisioning Center in all of our paperwork says Provisioning Centers, but in their paperwork, it says dispensary. And there are two different things, so we just want it to be consistent. And I understand that the representative from Oak Flint is on the line with the understanding that it is a Provisioning Center, but we would like to have the verbiage to be the same with what we have on our paperwork. And I know that Mr. Spence is prepared to tell us the difference between the dispensary and the Provisioning Center. And if you would do that for us, Mr. Spence, and we'll go from there.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, the word dispensary does not appear anywhere in any of the laws, be it the state law, at the state level for medical marijuana, nor in our zoning ordinance. Dispensary is kind of a word that tends to be, it's kind of a flip-flop. I mean, people use the word dispensary when they mean Provisioning Center. So it's just a word that's kind of been out there floating around. But what we go by is what the state law is, and that is Provisioning Center. We don't use dispensary anywhere in our law, in our zoning ordinance, nor does the state use the word dispensary. It kind of gets interchanged with Provisioning Center. And I know anytime someone has mentioned dispensary to me on the phone when they talk about a Provisioning Center, I do correct them. So again, people tend to use it interchangeably. But what is before the Council this evening is the extension of the site plan for a medical marijuana Provisioning Center, not a dispensary.
Thank you for that clarity. Would the applicant be willing to change his paperwork to say Provisioning Center? I believe that's what we're looking for.
Yes, Madam, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. And absolutely, I have no problems changing that. This was a clerical error, and I will make sure it's rectified 100% to be in line with the City of Southfield's wishes.
Okay, thank you very much. Hearing that, thank you. And Planner Spence, I'll leave that, make sure that that happens, and you'll get the paperwork in your office. And I'm satisfied with that. So Council, if you have no objections or no other questions, I will ask for a motion on Item B.
Madam President, I'd like to move the approval of Item B on the consent agenda for Oak Flint Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center, the extension of the site plan.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum's support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for the approval of the extension of the site plan approval for Oak Flint Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier?
Councilwoman Banks, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm sorry. My mute button wouldn't unmute. Can we have those comments reflected in the minutes, please? Since we do not have the actual letter with the correct verbiage on it, so can it be reflected in the minutes that the petitioner agreed to the verbiage?
Yeah, we will include that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. We have no public hearings, no site plan, so we go right to Communications. And just a brief statement before we start our communications that the City of Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedures for all of our speakers, following Rule 7 of our rules of procedure. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the matter in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council, and any person who violates this section will have their microphone muted. Thank you. Communications is now open. Is there anyone on the line for Communications?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin. Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Tonight, I wish Madam President to talk about Section 11.18, 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. 11.18 is entitled Amendments, which describes how this council may amend the charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy mandatory two-step Michigan state law known as Section 21 in the Michigan Home Rule Act of 1909, thus making Section 11.18 in the Charter null and void. Let me explain. Section 11.18 became null and void when the original authors of the Southfield City Charter forgot to include the second step in the state of Michigan's two-step procedure. Step number one, council must, first of all, pass a proposed charter amendment. And then, step number two, the voters must pass by ballot election council-proposed charter amendment. Sadly, Section 11.18 lacks step number, yes, you guessed it, step number two, the ballot election, the missing step. After 63 years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do yourself a fulicidus favor and fix Section 11.18 along with the many other flawed sections by creating a Charter Commission. If not now, then when? If not you, then who? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the line?
Hello?
Hi.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, this is Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm really concerned about all of these positions that are being offered or instituted or installed in our Human Resource Department.
Speak yourself again.
Hello? Someone is on the line speaking. Can you hear that person, or is it my opportunity to speak?
Please go ahead, Ms. Gerald. It's your opportunity.
Okay, because someone chimed in, so I'm hoping that I don't lose those minutes. So I'm concerned about the fact that all of these positions are being added in our Human Resource Department when we were blessed enough to get Dr. Maria Calhoun to now be employed in the Human Resource Department. I don't know that I'm in favor of starting a diversity advocate in the department when we have people in there that could be trained to do that. I'm also concerned about having that position, and that person would only be reporting to the H.R. Director. Even though we have an H.R. Director, he is not the city administrator. And other than city council, the clerk, and the treasurer, every entity within Southfield City Hall, and the exception of the mayor, reports to the city administrator. Now, we need to look at the employees that we have, the employees that have been acting directors for many, many years, and a lot of them have not been fairly compensated or given that position. Let's move at a glacial pace before we just go adding all of these positions to our municipal roster without taking care of the people that deserve attention and to be given their just due. So if we're going to add that position, why don't we look at taking someone that already works for the city in a capacity that they're not being served in terms of providing service to the public and train that person to be in that particular situation? I just want us to move at a glacial pace and be more cognizant of what we're doing and all these things we are adding because we've got employee contracts that I'm sure will be coming up or is already in the motion. And those people need to be.
Thank you, Ms. Gerald. I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. Thank you very much.
And can you please make sure that the next time I'm speaking, someone doesn't have the mic to chime in? It's very disrespectful. I don't know if it's the clerk doing it or allowing it, but we've been meeting on the phone long enough in more professional pace.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak under Communications? Madam President, there is not anyone else. And just for the point of information, the panelists, they can unmute themselves. So the feedback that we were getting was that wasn't under my purview. And panelists have the ability to unmute themselves if there's any additional interference. Thank you. Thank you.
It was her, because you could hear the echo. It was her.
Next, we have the council portion. Council, I will start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Good evening. I would just like to remind everyone to still continue to please wear your masks and social distance. The good news is our numbers are going down, and let's just pray that they continue in the downward mode so we can get back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No comments.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Only thing I wanted to say was just based on the comment from our previous caller during communication, the one that initiated the DEI position of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and worked with the administrator initially, and with the support of the council, of course. This is not, that's not the type of job that one does just by way of some type of training or anything. It's helpful, but it is something that people study and spend a great deal of time and research on. And there are a lot of talented people that can come in to help shape an organization in the direction you really wanted to go. And that's part of the reason why I sent Human Resources as well, because anything dealing with diversity, equity, and inclusion generally ends up in H.R. So that's the appropriate place to put it. It's not uncommon. You can find it in very numerous organizations. And so I just want people in Southfield to know that this is just us trying to be as proactive as possible and reactive. If anything were to come up that needed that type of attention, that we have people in place. But then we also want to start to continue to move Southfield forward even if nothing happens. And we want to have someone that's a professional in that area to make that happen. So other than that, again, I just want, I hope that all the mothers of Southfield had a wonderful day today and enjoyed your families as much as you could with COVID still going on. But many of us are moving forward. So I hope everyone has a good evening, and I'll stop there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier, I don't know if you're able to connect yet? No, okay. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. In kind of picking back off of Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Cruz about COVID in our area, the governor announced a new plan, her VAC-to-normal plan, which created some benchmarks for the state to reopen. She put out that plan. She put out that plan about a week, a week ago, and today she announced that we reached that first benchmark, which was fifty-five percent of the state being vaccinated. And, I'm sorry, like they're mowing the lawn in front of my apartment, so if you hear the background, I'm sorry for that. But the governor announced that fifty-five percent of Michigan residents have been vaccinated, and that was the first, first milestone we need to reach to get back to normal. So in two weeks after we reach each milestone, as part of the state will be reopened, with the fifty-five percent, this will allow all in-person work for all sectors of business to be reopened. When we get to sixty percent, there will be increased indoor capacity at sports stadiums to twenty-five percent, increases in indoor capacity at conference centers and banquet halls and funeral homes to twenty-five percent, increases in capacity at exercise facilities and gyms to fifty percent, and lifts on the curfews and restaurants and bars. At sixty-five percent, there'll be a lift on indoor, indoor capacity limits, requiring only social distancing between parties, and further relaxing limits on residential social gatherings. And once we reach seventy percent, there will be lifts on gatherings and face mask orders, such that the Department of Health and Human Services will no longer employ broad mitigation measures unless unanticipated circumstances arise. So we're getting, we're getting there. We have a number of resources available for you. If you need to get vaccinated, you can always go to the city's website to find out where you can get vaccinated. There are a number of places doing walk-in clinics now, the vaccine is readily available for people. The FDA also announced today that they've authorized the Pfizer vaccine for twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds, so if you have a twelve-to-fifteen-year-old who you want to get vaccinated, you can do that now, and this is just all a part of the effort for us to get back to normal. I know we all are dying to get back to normal, and so we are, we are almost there, we just have to do, do our parts and make sure we all get vaccinated. But that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know that Southfield Michigan Works will be having a virtual hiring fair focused on veterans, but it's open for everyone. It's going to take place, there's two opportunities on May twentieth, one from nine a.m. to noon, and then one, and then another session from one to four. It's a virtual hiring fair, so you can do it from your own computer, and then again, that's through the Southfield Michigan Works, and they can be reached at 248-796-4580. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I just want to remind everybody of the Beechwoods Virtual Open House tomorrow from six to seven thirty. Please take the time to tune in and listen to that, that'll be exciting, and we'll get to see what, what plans they've come up with. Also, I'd just like to mention some kind of sad news. The city of Southfield, we have one of our very active community persons, Mr. Alan Shaw, who lost his wife, Ms. Joanne Shaw. He's also a part of the Police Citizens Academy, so a lot of people know him, and he's very active in the community, but he lost his wife. Also, in our Cable fifteen area, we have our own Chris Campbell, who lost his father, as well as Cable fifteen lost Mr. Graydon Hyde. So the Cable fifteen area is saddened at this point, and please be a little patient, they're down a few people, and probably will be over the next few days. We send our condolences out to all the families, and send prayers up. And, thank you, that's all I have for right now. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening once again. I want to congratulate our city planner, who was, last week presented the Southfield Trailways Plan, all the work we've, we've done, and the council and mayor have supported to make our city center and trails leading from it more pedestrian-friendly. The, it was, unfortunately, it was a virtual conference, planner's conference, but four-hundred-and-fifty planners attended, and he got our plan, our planner got rave reviews, really transformational for a city that was designed around the automobile. Secondly, I want to remind people that tomorrow night at eight p.m. is our COVID memorial. We will be honoring the people who have succumbed during the pandemic to COVID-nineteen. We'll have short remarks by representatives of Lift Up Southfield, which is the Southfield Ministerial Association, and our flags, our memorial flags are on the lawn, when you get a chance, drive by, it's a spectacular display, and they will be up for the month of May. That's all I have this evening, again, eight p.m. tomorrow, front steps of City Hall, the candlelight memorial.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Madam President, I have no comments this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Madam President, Honorable Counsel, Mayor. I have on the line Contour Development, they recall in July, I'm sorry, January, they made a presentation, and I know council wants, this is a constantly moving topic, so I have for tonight, just a brief introduction, you all are familiar with consent judgments of nineteen eighty-two, so of course the lawyers are going to be sitting down and burning the midnight oil to go over the specific things that are going to need to be done to bring this back before council, but because this was such an important topic to many of you, I wanted to at least have a brief introduction about the changes that have happened since January, so right now, Contour Representatives, excuse me, on the line, and they're just going to give a very brief introduction of things that hopefully will be taking place in the future, as far as the requests, the things that they'll be bringing back to this body in more detail. So with that, with Mr. Paul Bargnino is on the line, I'm going to ask him go ahead and speak to council.
Thank you, City Attorney King, for the opportunity to speak to council tonight. I'm joined this evening by my colleagues, Latasha Dia, our Vice President of Property Management, and Courtney Sanford, who is the Onsite Property Manager at the Trowbridge Apartments. They're going to speak to you a little bit about the conditions at the property at the time that we acquired it in mid-March, and what we have been doing to improve those conditions in just under two months of our ownership, and what we're going to be doing hopefully going forward. So I'm going to ask them to kind of talk about that for just a few minutes, although there's a lot to talk about. And then, as City Attorney King mentioned, we will be meeting with her to talk about the nuts and bolts of the consent judgment, that's on record, and a couple of modifications that we think will be helpful to the future success of the property. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Latasha Dia, and she's going to speak about what we've been doing at Trowbridge since we acquired it in mid-March.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, city. Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, but we're receiving a really bad echo.
I'm going to move closer to the speaker. How's that?
Okay, that's...
That hurts.
It, it's, we're still getting a lot of feedback from your call, but go ahead and we'll, we'll see what, how we can do this.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you in regards to Trowbridge. You know, it's a beautiful project, we have encountered quite a few concerns and issues within the last two months, as Paul was describing, and I'll let the property manager, Courtney Sanford, go over some, some bullet point items as well, but just to touch on a few things, you know, within our first week, we acquired a number of plumbing and leak issues, you know, we also had electrical issues powering out, the heating and cooling systems not operational, a ton of safety issues even prior to us holding on the property, and I could attest to that, elevators that have been down off and on with residents and gas being stuffed within the elevators, et cetera. Also, a number of drug activity within the properties, I don't know if I had mentioned already, but the HVA system being down off and on, as well as a number of different concerns with the residents that we have on site. Now, I know that a lot of this that we probably have touched on in the past, but in regards to the security systems, our cameras there didn't work, not only that there was past due invoices regarding waste removal and things that we had to encounter coming in, our food and kitchen was not up to code. There's a number of, mostly all of our eighth-floor residents in the property that were either don't have leases or under the age of fifty-five kids, you know, tons of drug activity with being present there, you know, you can literally get off the elevator and smell it, or you can see it, and things of that nature, property damage, no vet ground checks, et cetera. What we've done to combat a lot of these things within that first week is, within two days, we held a, a meeting with the entire building, as many residents as we could to come and join us and go over all of the things that we have looking forward to in the future, the changes that were going to be made, and of course, with any change, you know, there's going to be a lot of confusion and a lot of questions, and happily, we were able, we were able to answer those questions, and even today, still able to answer those questions with some residents who just want to have a better understanding of what direction we're, we're going to be going in. Of course, with that, with all of that being said, we had to make a lot of employee changes, and right now, just building a team that's strong enough to support the residents that we have on site. I know we also have some caretaking concerns there with some caretaking programs that are actually not there for the residents that were making some, some, you know, forceful changes on right now, it's in process. The pendant system, which is extremely important to us, with the residents that we have there that have pendants that haven't worked since two thousand and sixteen, with us being, going through all the testing phases of that, us knowing that if there had been any urgency of some sort, besides us having twenty-four-hour staff there, that there's no way that anyone would know if a resident was in dire need. So we're addressing that, we've addressed the issue of getting calls for the elevators, also for the, for the HVA system. Right now, we're probably in the upward of one-point-five with all the upgrades and changes that the property needs to be up to par, up to code. We've already started having inspections on the wet pipe systems that are there that maintains the building, which the last testing there was, there's a tag on that, was in two-thousand-and-fifteen, was the last date that the wet pipe system, the stand pipe system, was dated for and inspected. So all of these things that we had to encounter coming into the property, which, yes, it goes along with us doing due diligence, and we had a short timeline for that, but the good thing is, it's not our first rodeo, and we would love to get in here, and we've already started addressing these things. Another major concern, which would be the drug activity, I've already started making leeway with evicting the eighth-floor tenants that are involved with the drug activity. This goes along with, along with investigations with license plates and pictures and being around the clock, and actually having our, our camera system, systems now up and going, and it was just something as simple as changing the batteries and including one or two more cameras, that would allow us to acquire information to work with the City of Southfield Police Department to address these issues, to expedite the eviction process for these residents that actually should not be in the fifty, fifty-eight and fifty-five and older senior housing community. So those are the, some of the things that we are addressing, and I know, even though I'm here all the time, Courtney is around the clock, she's been working seven days a week, she's on call, and she can give you a little, a little bit more information on what I've talked into. Courtney? Just experiences with tenants and tenants concerned, and maybe some of the meetings that you've had with the tenants regarding the drug activity and pest control, and the things that we've already done to start combating that, even though we, we fired the pest control company the first day, obviously, there were some issues with bedbugs that had not been addressed for months before we came along. The first week I was there, first day I fired the pest control, I had the next pest control company out that I've worked with in the past, very reputable company, we not only addressed those issues in those tenants apartments, but we also went through all the vacants and all the common areas, to be sure that we were looking into every single area of the property to address those concerns. Good evening, everyone. So just to add on to what Latasha is stating, as far as the pest control, we did go through every single one of the apartments, have them checked at the corner, their beds, and once we found out we had issues with pest control, we got them onto the schedule, pest control company now comes out twice a month, just to make sure that everyone is okay as far as the pests, and it's been pretty much under control, a lot of these situations have been taken care of fully, and any new sightings, we have addressed within the course of the week. As far as the eighth-floor tenants, there has been many run-ins with residents, residents have been approached by them, asking them for money, or asking them for many other different things, and the residents actually generally just don't feel comfortable with having them there. I would ask at least once to... ...to be gone. They even track the smell of marijuana through the entire building, just makes everyone uncomfortable knowing that they're there. Even having that issue with our safety, as, as far as the camera systems, knowing that we didn't always have, we were always privy to who was coming in and out of the community when those camera systems were not working, but now that all of the doors have some sort of camera system associated with them, we can monitor who is always in and out of our building. Okay. But also with the emergency pendant system, we noticed that, like Latasha said, there has not always been some aspect that has been working since at least two thousand
there has not always been some aspect that has been working since of this two thousand and sixteen. Within the past week alone, till last week, I had two issues with the system completely crashing because the computers are over twenty years old and the system was due for an update quite, quite some time ago. So it's constantly trying to, to figure out how to go about making sure that they're working on a daily basis and making sure that the residents can be attended to.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry, but I'm getting so many complaints. Nobody can really clearly hear and understand what you're saying. It sounds as if you're in a large room and everybody's sharing the same speaker or something, but it's very difficult for us on this side to hear and understand what you're saying. I'm really sorry. Is there any way you can get a different way of presenting? Because we truly cannot clearly understand what's going on.
Well, I, I don't know what we have, you know, technology-wise that would be different.
Are, are you in a large room?
We're, we're in our conference room.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like and you're sharing a speaker and it's really giving us a lot of feedback. Could you do a smaller office, maybe?
We're going to try and do that right now.
Thank you so much.
Give us a minute, we'll be right back with you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Yes.
Interest for us, I mean, do we have to take action tonight? Or can they maybe come back under presentations the next time?
Yeah, this, I'm sure they could. This was just for us to have a presentation and discussion of, of the changes that they wanted to, to do. So yes, of course, they, that's something we can consider because we were having a very difficult time with hearing.
Yeah, I've had a horrible time hearing this whole thing. So that would be, I'd rather them maybe try something else next time or, you know, we'll see what they can do now. But nonetheless, if we don't have to do it tonight, maybe we can move it to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. And while we're waiting for them, I would suggest we continue on with our meeting and go on to the next session. And then when they come back, I'll just ask them if they wouldn't mind trying a different, coming back a different day. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us tonight? No, not tonight. I just wanted to explain the, our IT director was working with Councilman Frazier trying to connect the call and that was the interference that we heard during the communication portion. So it was not done purposefully. They didn't know that their phone was unmuted and that was the, the feedback that was. So that's the clarification on, on that since I was, I was blamed for that, but that wasn't the case. Thank you. Thank you. Treasurer, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam President and members of the council. I just wanted to remind the, the audience that we have the water, delinquent water deadline is coming up May twenty-first. So any payments that need to be made should be made by that date for any balances of two thousand and twenty until December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. Otherwise, it'll go to the summer tax bill. Otherwise, that, that's all from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Planner? Planner Spence?
Yeah, Madam, Madam Chair, Planning Department has nothing more this evening. Thank you.
Our City Assessor? Okay, our City Engineer? All right. We have nothing to schedule. Counsel, we do have some ordinances that we need to enact and one we need to introduce.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number seventeen thirty-five.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. It's been moved, it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of the enactment of ordinance number one seven three five. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thanks. Yes. Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, you got it already.
I'd like to move the enactment of ordinance number seventeen thirty-six.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz for the enactment of ordinance number one seven three six. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to move the introduction of ordinance number seventeen thirty-eight.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz for the introduction of ordinance number one seven three eight. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman Frazier, you're now on the line with us. Did you have any comments or anything that you'd like to leave with the audience? Since you weren't connected when we did the council portion?
Well, the, the only thing I'd like to say is that I apologize for being late. I know last week I had some conflicts and some problems getting on. So this week I said, I'm going to get way ahead of it. I started at five o'clock and I still didn't get on. So the IT folks and I are going to do some dry runs to make sure that I get on at the beginning of the meeting. So I will be during the whole meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, counsel, that's all we have for tonight. If the, if the ones from Trowbridge, I'm sorry, from Contour, if they reach back out to us, Madam Clerk, could we just reschedule them?
At your request, yes, ma'am, they're, I have them unmuted. I think they may be trying to reconnect.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Paul is still showing on the line. Madam City Attorney, I don't know if you have a contact, maybe a phone number that you can reach out to him? Or is it the pleasure of the council just to move this forward and try to connect in a different capacity next time?
I, well, I think we should probably try to connect differently because we could not understand what was being said. And I think we should give them an opportunity to at least find a different way to call in, maybe just use their phones or, or something like that. So.
Okay.
That would be our, that would be our pleasure.
But Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I think out of a courtesy, we should talk to them before we sign off tonight, not just leave them hanging, just let them know where our plans are. Because no sense in this hanging up and leaving them hanging right now.
Okay. If, are they, if they're on the line, is, is the representative on the line?
Good evening, Miss, Madam President, this is Dawn. I'm talking to them right now and I'm that we're going to reschedule.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Brightwell, we will be re-scheduling and they are aware.
Yes.
Are there any other comments? All right, counsel, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn for tonight. Have a good evening. We'll speak again next week.